Who has the news on?
Aaron.
Yeah, I need to cut this thing off. Need to cut it off. That's my TV.
Yeah, cut it off. Please, sir. Thank you, Bob. How you doing, by the way? You all right?
Doing good.
Good, man. Good.
I have a second grandchild's positive now.
Yeah, well, you and Terry Jenkins. Terry's doing good, too.
Yeah.
All right, Mayor, we are live on YouTube and beginning recording. Just giving you a heads up.
Thank you, lady. We're waiting on the bell to ring. Jill said she, you know, since I moved over here in the tunnel, um, I can't hear the bell ringing because I'm deaf as hell. But, um, Jill can hear it. So as soon as she tells me the bell rings, we'll get this council meeting started. So just about two minutes or so, we'll, um, call her daughter.
Everybody present had accounted for? I'm flipping now to see if everybody's here.
There's Billy. Bill just popped on. He's around the corner from me.
With haircut.
I don't know where Terry is. Terry, Terry, where you?
I heard him earlier.
Thought he said something about, something about quarantine.
Still, still doing that?
I can, I can hear the echo between you two.
Okay, Bill, count to three, please.
One, two, three.
You are great, man. I didn't do that hard.
Good job.
You're doing good.
I, I can go backwards from X to D.
That's, that's all right. Stop right there.
X to Z.
Don't ruin it.
Andrew just came up, I think, and Chris came up. It might have been up, but I'm just seeing them. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Yeah, six o'clock.
Bell ringing? Okay, the bell's ringing, so I'd like to call the meeting order. And at this time, we'll ask Councilman Bob Jackson to have the invocation for us and the pledge allegiance to the flag. Bob, please, sir.
Dear Lord, please bless us, the town, and our decisions tonight during these trying and very difficult times. And please bless everybody and let everybody have a blessed Christmas celebrating your son's birth. And all those celebrating Hanukkah, may they have a wonderful experience also. May you protect all those that are protecting us locally and abroad. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have the Employee Length of Service Awards, so, Chris, are you going to handle that for us? Or Beth, or what?
I've got it.
Okay, darling. Appreciate it.
Sure. No problem. Um, tonight, we're going to recognize the following employees on their years of service with the town of Somerville. For 10 years of service, Orlando Willis, Ryan Shepherd, and Ryan Howlett. 15 years of service, Russ Cornet, Dennis Henderson, Al Brown, and Cheryl Beatty. 20 years of service, Kevin Austin, Richie Evangelista, Shannon Sharp, Brent Melcher, sorry. Laronne Coben and Tom Pierce. 25 years of service, Donna Scott and Ben Bunting. 30 years with the town of Somerville, Thomas Pappas. And 35 years of service to the town of Somerville, Mr. George Williams.
Wow. Yes, great.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much to these, um, fine people who have been with us for so long. Some of them I had the pleasure to work with. Um, I'll start right at the top with the 35-year guy, George Williams. I know George Williams since he was a young, young fellow. I'm not going to call him a boy when I met him, but, um, but that's what he was. Just, just a fine young man and, and has come to work for us as a young fellow and has stuck with us and done a great job. And I wish we could break this down and let them know what, and Beth, maybe you can, real quick, like, let us know what department they're with. Because I think that's a, um, a, a good thing to know is what department sees employees work with. To, um, to let the public know who are tuned into this thing, uh, tonight. Is that something you can do for us, or that's something you can't do for us?
I can't, just not right this second.
Okay. All right. Well, we will, we will get that out to the public to let them know what, what departments that our employees, um, work for. But I, I do know that George and, and some of the other guys, Richie, and some of the other guys that I know personally who have been here so long, uh, dedicating their service. But, but George's services, 35 years, is really a long, long time to work for the town. And I remember the day that he came to work. I knew him long before he ever came to work for the town. And, uh, I just appreciate so much that he and all these employees have done for us. And it's exciting to know he stayed with us. And I talked to him the other day when he was out there putting up the Christmas, Christmas lights, uh, between the two buildings. And, um, had an opportunity to talk to him and told him how much I appreciated what he's done over the years. Uh, he was the first man to run our bucket truck, you know? People look at these bucket trucks that are all over town today. And, um, and they think, well, you know, that's nothing to it. Well, I remember when we bought our first one. And, um, and I went up in that thing and it scared me to death. Now, I'd been up in a fire department bucket truck, but I'd never been up in a, like a, you know, a tree trimming bucket truck or something like what we had back then. But George had that thing under control. And I'll tell you what, we, um, he put up all the Christmas tree lighting in the park for the first time. And has done that thing for since. And is still doing it today and, and leading his young men unto him to do that. And I congratulate him for it. And I congratulate every one of our people who are receiving these awards, awards tonight. And it's so sad that we can't do the, this in an open council meeting. But I promise y'all, we will, won't forget you. We'll do it in an open council meeting one day. And I just congratulate you for the job you've done. We appreciate this so much.
Mayor Waring? This is Andrew. I've got the departments, if you want me to read them off for you really quickly.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Orlando Willis, 10 years, um, street department. Ryan Shepherd, stormwater. Ryan Howlett, fire department. Russell Cornet, engineering department. Dennis Henderson, police department. Al Brown, parks and recreation. Cheryl Beatty, police department. Kevin Austin, parks and recreation. Richie Evangelista, fire department. Shannon Sharp, police department. Brent Melcher, fire department. Laronne Coben, finance departments. Thomas Pierce, engineering. Donna Scott, administration. Andrew McBunting, fire department. Thomas Pappas, parks and recreation. And George Williams, parks and recreation.
Thank you, Chris. I know a few of those were, were a mistake, because Donna Scott works here in Town Hall. And, um, she didn't work in the fire department, but, but I know that you've got, you know, you've got what in front of you. And, but anyway, I appreciate you, um, trying to get those down to where they work. And, um, and that's, that's very appreciated. The main thing is that they know that we appreciate them and we are so happy that they're doing a, a job for us. And we, we want them to know as a town council that we, we appreciate what they do. We, we really do on a day-to-day basis. We know what they do. We appreciate what they do and we're happy for what they do. And if they need anything, all they got to do is call Ms. Rebecca Vance. And, uh, where's Rebecca? She's going to be smiling. I know. Yeah, there she is right there. Contact her. If they don't get anywhere with their supervisor, all they got to do is call them, Ms. Rebecca, and she will let me know and we'll take care of their problems. And congratulate to, congratulations to all, all of them. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Ricky, we, uh, missed Dennis Henderson, 15 years with the police force.
I don't know how we missed him, but 15 years is a long, long time. And, uh, congratulations to you very much, sir. Anybody else? Anybody else have anything to say? Okay, if nothing else. What is that noise? Okay, if nothing else, we move on to approval of the amendments of the previous meeting.
That we approve the meeting of the town council meeting minutes of November the 12th, a special call, council meeting of November the 20th, and the standing committee meetings of December the 7th.
I'll second their motion.
Motion made that we approved this meeting of A, B, C, and A, B, and C. Uh, any discussion? If not, I'll call for the question. Um, all in favor, signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 Any opposed likewise? Eyes carry. Okay, moving down to public five, public comments.
All right. The following public comments were received, um, via email before 4:30 today, and they have been given to the mayor and council and are now part of the public record. June Weldon, who is in favor of the face mask ordinance. Yanni Fofani, who is in favor of the mask ordinance. Ly Love, who is in favor of the mask ordinance. Caroline White, who is against the face mask ordinance. Heather Russell, who is against. Dory Lovell, who is against the ordinance. Brian Lewis, who is against the ordinance. Valerie Hernandez, who is against the ordinance. Dana Paul, who is against the ordinance. Candy Lovell, who is against the ordinance. Angela Depp House, who is against the ordinance. Tanya Richards, who is against the ordinance. Dylan Mullins, who is against the ordinance. Candace Wrestler, who is against the ordinance. Erica Malakowski, who is against the ordinance. And Laura Blans, who is against the ordinance.
Anything else, Beth?
No, sir.
It's all in the public comments?
That's it.
Okay. Move on down. Any petitions? No petitions?
No, sir.
Down to number seven, bills and resolutions.
The second and final reading of an ordinance to amend the Somerville Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 13, Section 13 dot 10 dot 1, administrative adjustment.
I'll make a motion that we approve that.
Second.
Motion made, we second, motion made, second, that we have final reading on the ordinance to amend the Somerville Unified Development Ordinance. All in favor of this, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 All those opposed likewise? Eyes carry.
Next is the second and final reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 16, offenses and miscellaneous provisions. Article 1 in general, section 16 dash 12, rules and regulations for public parks and public facilities in the town of Somerville Code of Ordinances.
Make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we approve this. Second.
I'll second.
A motion made, made, and second, that we have the, um, final reading on this ordinance. All in favor, say, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes carry.
All right. Second and final reading of an ordinance to adopt an operating budget for the town of Somerville for the fiscal period beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2021.
I'll make a motion that we approve that.
Second.
A motion made that we adopted the, the gen, agenda for the 21 budget.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor, we had, um, we had three amendments that were sent out to you guys earlier today. That we asked that council approve. They were amendments to the, um, administration salary line item, amendments to the hospitality tax capital, um, infrastructure line item, and amendments to the stormwater budget.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we make those three amendments as, um, suggested by staff.
I'll second that.
Motion made, except, and, uh, motion made and seconded that we have, um, accept those amendments to the budget. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Eyes carry.
Now you guys have to go back and approve the actual amended budget.
Okay, now we go back to the second final reading. I need a, I need a motion to second final reading on the ordinance to adopt the operating budget for the town of Somerville.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion second to final, uh, final reading. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on this? If not, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
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 Opposed likewise? Eyes carry.
Next is first reading of an ordinance to authorize the mayor or town administrator to execute a quitclaim deed to Bradley W. Mallett Jr. for TMS number 1371409015, which is Lot 4 on Legree Lane.
I'll make a motion that we approve that quitclaim deed.
I'll second.
Okay, motion, motion, um, made to grant the ordinance to, for quitclaim deed to, um, to this. And we've got a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Right hand. All opposed likewise? Eyes carry.
Next is the first reading of an ordinance to rezone TMS numbers 1370207012 and 1370207006. Located at 108 and 110 North Palmetto Street, approximately 0.51 acres each, and owned by Justin L. and Lindy E. Carpenter for 108, and Justin and Lindy Carpenter and Paul and Deborah Gallagher for 110. From GR2, General Residential, to GR5, General Residential. And this is in Council District 1.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve that. If, unless Kimma just did it. And if she did, I'll second.
Kimma just, Kim.
I, I made the motion. He can second it.
Kimma made the motion. Terry, you second it. Okay, okay. Um, that's on the TMS number 13702-dash-07-dash-012, right, Kimma? Right, um, Beth?
Yes, sir.
16, 006.
Right, right. That's right. On Palmetto Street. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand and voting aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Motion carried.
Next is a consideration of an emergency ordinance regarding face coverings.
I'll make a motion that we approve that ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made in consider, to consideration of an ord, uh, consideration of an emergency ordinance regarding face masks. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can, um, GW, uh, back and forth on this. I'd like a little clarification on it. Um, as to how, how long it's going to last and, uh, so that it'd be clear to the, uh, listening public and maybe some of the council members.
I'm, I'm sorry, Aaron, you're, you're frozen. Can, can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Um, the municipal association guidelines for emergency ordinances , uh, give you a six-month timeframe. Um, they can only be enacted for 60 days at a time. You go past that six months, uh, you have to look at adopting an ordinance in the ordinary course of business. But what you have before you is an emergency ordinance for masks, an emergency ordinance for virtual meetings. Both of those ordinances will expire or terminate on January the 10th of 2021, which is the next council meeting. Um, at that time, the two other ordinances that you are going to consider in just a few minutes, uh, one of those would be, uh, permanent. That's to allow us to have virtual meetings in the case of any emergency, as well as counting a form by someone attending, um, by electronic means. The mask ordinance has a sunset clause, clause, uh, for, uh, to terminate by, uh, further action of council, uh, and/or the governor, caring that the state is no longer in a state of emergency because of COVID-19. Whichever one of those would first occur, uh, that ordinance would, um, expire. So.
Yeah. All right, thanks. I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, may I be heard on the emergency mask ordinance?
Yes.
Um, you know, I, I've been, uh, probably, uh, Ms. Gordon Schmidt and I have probably been the most outspoken on, on having reservations about, uh, municipal mask ordinances. I, I will tell you, I, I voted initially, I think at a special meeting in June, to have an emergency ordinance for seven days. At that time, cases were spiking in Dorchester and across the state. I believe I voted at the June live meeting to extend it for a 30-day, another 30 days. I don't believe I voted for any extension since then. I may be wrong. I, I intend to vote tonight for this particular extension. I think that, that the conditions that, uh, were present in late June and early July that led us into the mask ordinance business, I, I believe that they, that they no longer existed in September and October and November. And that's why I, at least three or four times, voted not to extend. Unfortunately, I think we find ourselves with a third wave of COVID at our doorsteps. Uh, it certainly already hit the upstate, Greenville, Spartanburg, York Counties are, are in some real, uh, distress with a number of cases. So I tend to, I intend to vote for this particular emergency ordinance for a 30-day extension. Having said that, I'm opposed to doing this by permanent ordinance. Uh, and I, and so I also intend to vote against first reading of the permanent ordinance. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could speak.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I agree with a lot of, um, Mr. McIntosh, um, what he is saying. Um, but we've had this mask ordinance along with several other municipalities in South Carolina, along, um, in the United States. And, um, that, there still is no scientific, um, evidence that the masks are actually working. And I understand that a lot of people want to wear that mask, and that is fine, especially those are the, are most vulnerable to this. But I, again, will vote no on this. Um, I mean, our numbers wouldn't be keep on going up if this mask ordinance was working, in which, when I go out, I would say less than 1% of the people that I see are not wearing a mask. Um, and if that is really the case, then our numbers all over the US should have been going down, and they are not. I, I just, um, I'm against this. I'm going to vote no once again on this. Um, so I wanted to say my say.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Um, I, I'd like to say my say. Um, I think the, the, the mask ordinance is a pain in the you-know-what. Um, but I've got a lot of friends who are doctors. And, uh, they claim that it is the only thing next to this vaccine that we hope we'll have on the market in the next couple of days. They keep saying next couple of days, and them next couple of days keep going to a couple more. As y'all will read like I do. Um, but anyway, hopefully, with God's blessings, you know, we'll, we'll get to it one day. Um, I read in the front page of the paper today that 50% of American people will not take the vaccine. Well, I'm gonna stand in line and get mine first, I hope.
You can be standing behind me, Mr. Mayor.
But in, in, in the meantime, I'm gonna wear my mask. And, um, you know, I'm behind this mask ordinance 100%. I, I think that it is the only thing that we got going for us. Um, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm upset with anybody that doesn't agree with me, because, you know, we all got our, our opinions on, on what we do. But I do have a lot of doctor friends, and they, they, they can, they, they think this is the best thing we've got going. The only thing we got going, because we don't have anything else other than wash your, wash your hands and, and, um, social distancing. So if you do all three, you know, you might not get this thing. I just had a personal friend of mine die last week in five days. I was pall-buried at his funeral yesterday. Um, it's, it's sad, it's what's going on, and, and these numbers are rising. I mean, they're rising every day. And I'm going to have to vote for this. Um, I don't have any choice but to vote for it. But anyway, that's, that's my two cents. And, um, um, I'm, I'm going to vote for it. And, um, and, you know, that's, that's my two cents. If anybody else has got anything to say about it, the floor's, the floor's open.
Yeah, just to back that up, um, because of my unique situation with my family when we had the COVID, I've become part of the research project at MUFC and working straight with the Department of Immunology. And Kim is right. They're not sure what this is, and they openly admit it'll probably be the middle of next year before they find out how this thing is actually working. But the only thing that does work, and this is also from a cardiologist, is the masks. And people saying there's dirt on the masks and stuff. It keeps you from spraying on other people. And if we are wrong, what harm comes? If those not wearing masks are wrong, what harm comes? I think that's a big difference.
Thank you, Bob. Action, I, I think that, um, that's very nicely stated. There are only, uh, we, we have two options in front of us. One is not wearing a mask, which absolutely cannot, will not help anything. And wearing a mask, which may or may not, depending on your perspective, help something. So I, I don't see where erring to the side of caution, uh, is against us. I realize that there are some people, and we've had at least one young lady come to us to a council meeting to speak of her issue and how it impacts her. Um, and in, in her situation of anxiety, uh, wearing a mask. And, and we've heard from people that, um, have embarrassment for, um, people looking at them funny because they're not wearing a mask. But, but those are the minority, and, and a, and a very, very, very few. So I think erring on the side of caution, and, and, and by the way, I'm not a strong believer that masks help. I, I, I just know it's got to be better than not having a mask. So, uh, I will vote yes on it tonight.
Anybody else? Okay. All in favor of this, um, D, well, let's see, C. Consideration of emergency ordinance regarding face masks. All in favor of this? Raise your hand.
Aye.
Vote aye.
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 Okay, how many we got?
Six.
Those opposed, raise your hand.
Aye.
Or nay.
That's fine, that's fine, Kim. Okay, motion carried. Okay.
All right.
We move down to the consideration of an emergency ordinance regarding electronic meetings for town council and citizen committees, boards and commissions.
I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we approve the extent. I think this is an extension, but if it's not, an emergency ordinance to allow for electronic meetings for town councils, citizens committees, boards and committees.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of this, say to five by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Likewise. Motion carried.
Next is first reading of an ordinance to amend town ordinances 2-94 and 2-95 to provide that council meetings, boards, commissions and committees be allowed to meet electronically and telephonically.
Okay, yeah, motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve that.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We approve CE on the agenda. Any discussion? Everybody understand? All in favor, say to five by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise?
Nay.
What was that? You vote no, Bill?
A nay. This is the, from my understanding, this is the permanent ordinance on Zoom meetings essentially?
Yes.
All right, and next we take up the permanent ordinance on face coverings?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, first reading of an ordinance requiring individuals to wear face coverings in certain circumstances and matters related thereto.
I'll make a motion. We approve that.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded on F. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just one comment. If I'm understanding, this would be a lot easier if we were in person, but we're having Zoom. We have approved, 6 to 1, the mask ordinance to go into January. It is my understanding that F is to make that a permanent ordinance that would allow us to go beyond January, which takes a second reading in January. And that being the case, I will vote for it and may vote for it again in January. But I think everyone should recognize that we also have a chance to not pass it when we get to the January meeting, should that be the will of council.
That's how I understand it, right, GW?
That's correct, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
This is just the first reading.
Yeah, okay, you're right, Terry. So Bill, Mr. McIntosh, what's your, what's your problem?
Where do I start, Mr. Mayor?
Tell me, I ask you.
Oh, we're talking about the mask ordinance. I didn't know.
Yeah.
I do not think that we should enact. And I am one who normally will vote for something on first reading because it can always be amended between first reading and second reading. I believe strongly, however, in the absence of a, in the absence of a clear, clear exigent circumstances, I don't believe that the town, that a municipality in South Carolina has this type of authority over what people do on private property. And as everybody will recall, including our friends in the media that somehow keep getting our mask ordinance wrong, this only applies to town prop, town buildings, inside town buildings, grocery stores and pharmacies. Well, grocery stores and pharmacies are private property. And for us to, on a permanent basis, to tell folks what they can and can't do on their private property in the absence of a clearly defined emergency and on an otherwise permanent basis, I think exceeds our authority. As Mr. Parker says, that it's the first of two events. And one is that the council rescind the ordinance. Well, every ordinance we enact, we can rescind. It takes two, a permanent ordinance, it takes two readings to enact and it takes two readings to rescind. So that's true in every single ordinance we've ever enacted. So that's really nothing new. What greatly concerns me about this ordinance is we would be essentially ceding our authority to determine when the emergency ends, whether emergency or exigent circumstances still exist and give it to the governor's office. And I'm just, you know, I'm just not willing to do that. So I, you know, I believe strongly that we need to have this very limited mask ordinance in place for the next 30 days. I believe that everything I've read and heard from people who seem to know what they're talking about, we're about to get a spike in cases. It's happening all over the country. It seems to be heading our way. We'll also have vaccines on the way. I just, I think enacting a prominent ordinance, ceding some of our authority to the governor's office is a mistake, so I'm voting no.
And I'm going to agree with Mr. McIntosh on this. He's the lawyer. He knows a lot more than I do.
Come on now.
But I totally agree with what he's saying.
Thank you, Ms. Kim, and thank you, Mr. McIntosh. But he's not our lawyer, Mr. Parker is. And not that I'm cutting you off, Ms. Kim, because I'm going to allow you to say what you want to say. So go ahead at this point.
No, I'm finished.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask Mr. McIntosh a question for clarification. If we do not pass this specific ordinance tonight and we come to January desirous of going further, how do we do that?
Well, as Mayor Waring correctly pointed out, Mr. Parker is our corporation counsel. I think he's provided us with, at one time, three different options of how that could possibly be done. But you know, the reality is that we, I think, are all most comfortable with an emergency ordinance not being extended past six months. The reality is, we will be at that six months, I believe, right about December 30th. So no matter what, we're going to be extending it for an extra 10 days beyond six months. You know, I can count, this is going to be, get first reading. My suggestion would be that, would be that we look at a pretty significant amendment to this ordinance for second reading. Because I just think it's, I just think it's a mistake to tie the sunset of this ordinance to folks in Columbia in the governor's office that we have absolutely no control over or otherwise require us to take a fairly extraordinary step and give two readings to rescinding the ordinance. So I mean, I understand that first, it's going to pass first reading. I hope we can improve upon it between now and January 10th.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I kind of share Mr. McIntosh's thoughts on that. I'm going to go ahead and vote for first reading, but I'm going to keep my options on second. It looks to me like the only real reason for doing this is to prevent having to go through this grill every month. And if we make a permit, we wouldn't have to do that. But I think that advantage is offset by the fact that I think we're crossing a line when we do a permanent ordinance, mandate and mask until some other individual besides the town, the governor, decides when that's over. I think that it's our ordinance, it should be our call on when it ends.
And I can agree with that, and I think we can work on it between first and second reading.
Yeah, I do too. I think, I agree with you and Mr. Bailey, I agree with you and Mr. McIntosh. You know, we've got a month before we do a second reading. Unless something changes drastically, we will do a second reading. But anyway, that's, and that's why I wanted to hear from Mr. McIntosh. Because I know he studied this thing and as far as, you know, property rights, I agree with him 100%. You know, so anyway, so let's call for the vote. And all in favor, say to five by raising your right hand and saying aye. Opposed likewise?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, what does that mean?
I was an aye.
Five to two, okay. All right, we'll move on down to. Beth, you with me?
I am. We have a discussion of the 2019 financial audit.
Becca, are you?
I'd make approval, I'd make a motion that we approve second reading of the 2019?
No.
This is the audit.
Oh, the audit, oh, the approval of the, yeah, sorry, geez.
I second Terry.
Can we go back to 2019? That would be my motion.
I don't want to do this again.
Yeah.
We wasn't here then. That'd be a good idea.
Mayor, I will defer to Andrew on most of this and chime in when I can. Obviously, I wasn't here in 2019. I've read through the audit and made some observations. And Andrew and I have talked through those. He's going to give you the high points. You guys received the actual audit report and you received the auditor's discussion and analysis, which goes into a little bit more detail. So after Andrew talks, if you have any questions, feel free to ask and we'll try to answer them. This is the 2019 audit, so you will very quickly get a 2020 audit. Andrew has already scheduled the auditors to be here in February, pandemic or not. So either they're here in person or here virtually, but it'll be done early. So you'll very quickly get that audit. And then we'll finish on June 30th and we'll get another audit after that. And then we will finally rotate into a normal schedule, which means the end of the year will be June 30th and you'll get that audit by December of that year and we'll kind of roll into that cycle. But you're going to get a lot of audits in the next year, so enjoy.
2019 audit issued, we use Malden and Jenkins out of Columbia as our auditor. They audited the town the past five, four years. Very, very good firm. We work well together. We issued an unmodified or clean opinion. That's generally the first part of the audit statement is their opinion. That's the first part there. The next part of the audit, financial statements are what they call the government-wide financial statements. These take the town as a whole and present them as one financial statement or financial unit. This kind of differs away from the fund basis that we report on during the year. Those are very, the first one, the statement net position, kind of gives your assets, liabilities in your final net position of the town. As of December 31st, 2019, total assets, the government-wide financials, approximately 164 million. And then total liabilities are approximately 69 million. That leaves a total net position of roughly 86 million. You'll notice unrestricted net position is negative. This has to do with our net pension liability, the way we have our pension set up. Due to accounting rules and regulations, we have to account for a portion of that. And that brings our net position, that's unrestricted to negative portion. Next portion of the audit is the statement of activities. This tries to take your revenues as a town as a whole, match them to actual expenditures. And then anything that's not able to be matched in expenditure is just classified as general revenue. So total expenses, government-wide, were 44 million. And then miscellaneous, the general revenues were approximately 25 million. And this cost a change in position for the year of 757,000. Next portion of the audit is the, what we call our fund statements. These are more governmental-based statements. These are what we read. This gives us our fund balances. The first part is the balance sheet. It shows total assets, liabilities, deferred inflows of resources and then fund balance. And this is done by major fund, which is our general fund, our local accommodations, hospitality funds, our infrastructure fund. And then we have non-major funds. Those are some of the other smaller funds that we use during. Total general fund assets at year-end were 33.2 million. Total liabilities, 2.4 million. Total deferred inflows of resources, 11.7 million. This gave us a total fund balance, general fund of 18.9 million. Of this, 7.4 was unassigned. 233 is unspendable. Those are items like inventory, items you can't spend or assets. We still have our fund balance policy, which we put 6.4 million as general government. Then our 3 million is disaster recovery. And then we budgeted 1.7 million for subsequent year budget. Local accommodation hospitality, 6.3 million assets. 115,000 in liabilities, give us a fund balance at year-end of 6.2 million. Infrastructure fund, 6.6 million assets. 1 million liabilities with a total fund balance at year-end of 5.6 million or 5.56 million. Non-major funds, 7.3 million assets, 1.9 million in liabilities. This gave us a total fund balance on non-major funds of 3.7 million. The next part of the audit is our statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balances. This shows us our governmental activities throughout the year, our revenues, expenditures and then some of our other financing sources. Total governmental revenue for the period was 43 million, with 32 million in general fund revenues, 4.4 million in hospitality accommodations tax revenues, 1.6 million in infrastructure revenues and 5 million in non-major governmental revenues. Total expenditures for the period were 54.3 million, with 36 million in general fund expenditures, 5.4 million local accommodation hospitality tax revenue or fund. Infrastructure expenditures, 8.3 million and non-major fund expenditures of 4.5 million. This caused a net change in fund balance. Overall, the deduction or change in fund balance was a negative 10.6 million in governmental funds with a change in general fund revenue decreased by 1.7 million. Local accommodation hospitality decreased by 2.7 million. Infrastructure fund revenue or fund balance decreased by 6.6 million. And non-major governmental funds increased of 506,000. The next part of the financials are the notes to the financials. These go into a lot more. These go into a lot more detail about the numbers included in those that we presented, give more detail on our overall accounting policies, gives our assets, our liabilities, and long-term debt detail. It discusses our employment benefits, and then our pension plan. In the back is our general, it's the budget to actual reports. It shows what we budgeted, and then the actual, you know, we look at the general fund, budgeted 32.4 million in revenue, or I'm sorry, budgeted 30 million in revenue and collected 32.4 million. There's this difference of 1.5 million in revenue from the budget. Of that, 500,000 was in business licenses. We've been fortunate, fortunate that has been exceeding our budget every year. We've been pretty aggressive on budgeting that, but it has been exceeding it. There was a 640,000 state revenue budget, actual over-budget. That was a one-time payment received from the state on some grant and some other items we received. And then the other, the other variance in revenues was 345,000 in investment income. We changed some of our investment strategies and did a lot better than our actual budget. Then if we look, total expenditures, budget was 5.4 million. Actual expenditures are 36 million. So we exceeded budgeted expenditures by 637,000, and a lot of that was throughout the year, one-time request and updates to approve those. The final, but we budgeted a reduction in fund balance of 2.5 million, had a total reduction in fund balance of 1.7 million. So our final variance is approximately 787,000. And those are the highlights. There are several other sections. The main thing is the management discussion analysis that's the front part of the financial report. If you want to read through that, it gives our analysis of what's happened throughout the year. It gives year-to-date and 2019 to 2018 comparisons, shows some items have changed. One item we will mention, we did have a reportable condition for the 2019 audit. What this means is as the auditors did their work, they did find three items that weren't correct when we gave them the financial information. They had to do with our year-end closeout, some more reconciliations, some more new systems. It took us a while to get those running properly. Once we gave this information to the auditors, as we were going through it, we both discovered these items. It is a reportable condition. We agree with the auditors, and we plan to correct these and make sure these don't happen again.
And those three little errors that you spoke of, would they have any significant effect?
No, sir. They would have an effect on the financial statements. They're corrected. Once we discussed it and discovered them, we addressed this with the auditors, and we worked together. And one was a kind of a key error and a reconciliation error, and then one was a system error, just we, some accounts payables that we have to do at year-end. When you change from fund accounting over to government-wide accounting, you have to bring a lot more detail into the financial reports, just our systems being new with them. We just didn't properly record that before we gave the information to the auditors. We were in the process of reviewing all our policies, making sure we, everybody understands them, make sure we follow them throughout the year, working together with other departments and making sure we get everything corrected.
Mayor, Andrew, do you have anything else you wanted to add, or?
Not right now. If anybody's any questions, feel free to let me know. Like Rebecca said, we're going to have a very quick turnaround, try to issue the financials the end of March, if possible, probably the first of April, then jump right into our budget period for the 7-1 budget, and then go again from 6:30 to another audit. So we'll be busy, but we'll get everything running well, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, counsel, for me, looking at audits over the years, the most important pages in this audit are going to be page 15 and page 56 and 57. Those are the two pages, I think, that give you a good look at the town's financial health as a whole. And then if you look at page 56, that actually gives you the budget to actual, which is what we use as we're going through and trying to figure out what to budget for each of the departments and each of their line items next year. The thing to note is that most of our revenues exceeded our budgeted amounts, which is great, and that most of our expenditures were below their actual budget. So, and some significantly below their budget, which is good. That means that your revenues are healthy and that you're exceeding your budgets there, and that your department heads aren't overspending in their actual departments, which is really good to see. The things that did have some over expenditures, or not even over expenditures, just expenditures more so than were budgeted, were the capital outlay. And again, those are projects that council votes on kind of as we go along in the year, and those are one-time projects. So it's not an operational expense that you could say is over, not being budgeted correctly, or department heads are overspending. It's something, it's a one-time expenditure, so. If anybody has any questions, we can dive a little deeper.
Rebecca, can you give us an example of what you're talking about right there, what council approves that may, may take us over budget? I mean, would that be something like we did with the Gadsden property up there on Richardson Avenue? Would that be something like that?
As you guys, as counsel goes through and approves an actual allocation of fund balance or actually approves something that's not budgeted, you know, buying a fire truck that wasn't budgeted, or buying property that wasn't budgeted, that's what a capital outlay would be. So it's not something that's operational, it's something that's a, you know, a one-time expenditure, that you're buying something that's an asset that wasn't actually budgeted. But as we've seen, there are things that come along during the year that you have to make those expenditures, but those aren't budgeted expenditures, and they have to be captured in your audit report and in your funding, and it just shows you what you spent and when you spend it.
When we get into a situation where we, as a council, are getting ready to spend money, would it be your recommendation to us, to tell us, when we were getting ready to do something that's going to put us in a financial situation where we don't need to be? I'm not trying to ask you a loaded question or anything here, because I know you as new as I am. But when we are getting ready to bring our butt, you know, if we're, if we've got a lot of money, and we get ready to bring ourselves down into a situation where we couldn't, you know, almost hit up where we are now, you could, you would tell us, you know, this is not probably a good time to do this. You would do that, you know, say, you know, you can do this if you want to, but it's going to put you in a situation where you really don't want to be.
Yes, so I think moving forward, like Monday, when you guys took a vote on purchasing the mast arms for the Bear Island Road project, I would like to make it a habit that when we give you, when we ask for an expenditure, we will tell you what the fund balance is, as best we know at that time, when you're making those expenditures, so that you're making a decision not in a vacuum, thinking that there's, you know, it's an endless pot of money, but you know more where you are. Those fund balances fluctuate, and you don't really know until the end of the year where they are, but, you know, we know now what, how we ended last year, and we know everything that council has approved through, you know, today as fund, you know, as expenditures out of the fund balance. So we can go back and tell you almost exactly where you are at this point. So I'm going to try to make that a habit, if we have the information available that we feel is actual information that will help you guys. I'm going to try to make that a habit of giving it to you when you make those decisions.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I know you as new as we. So I think we're in good shape, and thanks for all your help in the last seven, eight months. I think we're in good shape. Thanks for the report. Andrew, thank you for your report.
Rebecca, one comment, and I will say it existed this year, but it certainly has in past years, whether that was prior four years, or the prior four years, or prior to that. But what I would like for you and department heads and council to look at is the fact of, we put in budgets, and through the course of the year, those budgets guide what people are doing, but I would like to see it where department heads are rewarded for being able to be frugal in all years, not just this year, whereas there have been times in the past where I think there has been an early rush to spend, an end-of-year rush to spend to make sure that we achieve budget, so that when I put in for next year's budget, I am more likely to get it. And I think the reverse should be true as it is in the business world. We're all here to protect funds and protect the interest of our citizens and to try to save money. And when you do that, and you're looking for something that's different next year that advantages us, you're rewarded for being as, as, frugal is probably not the right word, but is conscientious with the spending of money as you can be for our department heads.
Yes, sir. I think we have some very conscientious department heads now. I think it comes from, I think what helps is that when you go to look at the budget process and you're meeting with department heads and talking with them about their budget, but having where they are to date and having an audit report with these actual numbers in it, and even more in-depth numbers that can say, you know, last year you spent X on repair and maintenance, so why is it that this year you're asking for a 25% increase? And making them tell you what it is and justify that. And I think just being more involved, you know, me being more involved in the budget process and working with the department heads, so that you, so that they kind of understand that, so you really know how much it costs to provide each of the services that we provide as a town.
Thank you. Good, good. Anybody got any questions?
Andrew, I don't know that we need an actual approval of this, do we, or acceptance? Or what do you guys do here?
No, we present it. I mean, it's been issued by the auditors, it's their final opinion. Council can accept if they like, or it's informational only. Do we do it?
If needed, I'll make a motion, we accept the 2019 financial audit as presented.
I'll second. Okay, motion made, that we accept the audit as presented. And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, motion carried.
Next is approval to bid out archaeological study on the Oak Brook Ashley River Preserve.
I'll make a motion that we approve and do that.
I'll get out of here. That's it. You're good.
Motion made that we approve the bid to archaeological study on the Oak Brook Ashley River Preserve. And a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the main reason to do this is in the future, if we want to use grants or federal money, we're going to have to do it anyway, and it would be good to know if we have something to protect there before we start construction and moving things around. And it will also give us maybe some more details on the history of that area during colonial times.
Okay, Bob, thank you.
We have a call?
Don't we have a call on that?
No, we're just putting it out for bid.
That's what we're doing now.
Sorry, Bob, my bad.
Yeah, so it'll have to come back to you guys for approval. And I think for us, I don't have any real idea of how much it'll cost, so if we put it out, we'll get bids back, we'll put a good scope together, get bids back, and kind of see where we go from there.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, is we're approving the bid, that's what we're doing.
In this process, will, is going to take approximately how long the bids and for them to come back?
I mean, I think we can get the bid out in January at some point, and, you know, you advertise it for two to four weeks, and imagine you'll get it back, but, you know, in February or so.
Okay, sounds good.
All in favor, that signify by raising your right hand, voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, aye is carried. Okay, the next thing on the list is public comments.
I did not have any additional public comments.
Okay, good. All right, next thing is second session.
We have personnel matter regarding appointments to citizen committees, commissions, and boards, legal matter regarding condemnation of Track 27 on North Maple Street, legal matter regarding a proposed tax increment financing district, legal matter regarding major road funding, legal matter regarding Somerville Fire and Rescue Fire Service, and contractual matter regarding 208 South Cedar Street.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session.
I'll second or third that motion with an encouragement that we remember to get to all six items.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.